Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to the Monday, August 8th, 2016 School Board Meeting. We're going to start tonight's meeting with a spotlight. Superintendent Metz will kick it off.
Good evening, everyone. I want to introduce Jenny Magdal. She is the International Baccalaureate Coordinator at the high school.
Hello. Thank you so much for welcoming me here tonight and allowing us the opportunity to congratulate our 2016 Diploma Recipients. They're no longer Candidates/Recipients. This year in the World of IB Diploma Program, we had 200 students taking 476 IB course examinations. In each course, students completed both internal assessments, like oral examinations, and in chemistry, they completed their own lab that they designed. And they also completed a whole bunch of external assessments, which were the slew of examinations that they took in May. But we're here today to celebrate the 12 Diploma Recipients that we are graduating. These students were required to successfully complete three standard-level courses. Those courses run from either a year to two full years. And three higher-level courses. Each of those are two years in length. And from five to six categories, so English, World Language, History, Science, Math, and possibly Art. Seven of our Diploma Recipients chose to take four higher-level courses rather than the three that's required. Four of our Diploma Recipients chose to take an extra standard-level course that they didn't count towards their Diploma, they just wanted to take it. Four of our Diploma Recipients earned the bilingual Diploma for being fluent in both Spanish and English. And they had to complete CAS work, Creativity Activity in Service, an extended essay, which is a 4,000-word research report of their own choosing outside of the school day, and TOK, which is Theory of Knowledge. Through all of this, our students could earn between 24 and 45 points. Our students earned an average of 29.5 points with our high scores of 34 points. So congratulations to all of you. We have a few students that we knew were not going to be here, and we've got a quick video of what they think IB meant for them.
I'm Jamie Halper. I'm going to Harvard next year, and I plan on majoring in something having to do with public health, but I don't know specifically what major I'll be doing. I think the IB Diploma Program was really great in helping me become a more well-rounded student, so instead of having to find my own path with taking different classes, it just automatically sets you on a track to explore different classes that you might not take if you were just choosing them on your own. I think the biggest thing about the IB Diploma that influenced me is I thought that I, for a very long time, I thought I wanted to be a doctor. And then kind of towards the beginning of this year, after writing the extended essay and having history in English and becoming more interested in those classes, and I'm still very interested in biology and chemistry, but I realized that I think the things that I'm good at and the skills that I've built through the IB Program and discovered through the IB Program have really directed me more towards public health and public policy and less towards actually being a doctor. And so I think taking all of these classes, like history and English, and learning what I'm capable of in those as opposed to biology maybe, makes me feel more confident in that area.
I'm Dorothy Slater. I'm going to Tulane University next year in New Orleans, and I'm planning on majoring in public health and sometime either getting a Masters in Public Health or Special Ed. I think it's taught me a lot of the skills that I use, especially like homework-wise, but like in class, like it's taught me how to study well and how to like perform well. And I think like one of the most important skills I've learned is like how to know what you need to do and what you don't need to do. Like if you're getting a huge, huge, huge like curriculum, like there are some things that you just can't do. Like you can't read every word of everything. And so I think I've learned a lot about like what is the most important thing to do and like how to manage my time so I do all the most important things. And I think that's been really valuable.
Well, I'm Ryan Casey. Next year, I'm headed to the University of Minnesota in Twin Cities, and I plan on studying marketing. For me, I just found the whole learning experience to be a lot more smoother and more like interactive, I suppose. Because all the classes like history, I think, makes the biggest difference because you're going into a few topics a lot more in-depth than you would with other classes, which I enjoyed a lot. And otherwise, they just try to get you to learn all the different aspects of being a person besides just like the knowledge and the textbook.
Unfortunately, we don't have Dan and Campos here tonight, and I didn't realize that, so we didn't get a video of her for this, but I do have one that I'll be sending to the board tomorrow. I don't know who has the certificates. Do you have, you have the certificates?
Ah, yes.
Excellent. Wonderful. Okay. Excellent. Okay. Ooh. We're not going in order. So Madison, Madison Vignis. Come on up.
Last name first this time.
Thank you. And open it, Gino.
What? Oh. I thought it was the other way around. Okay. So what do I say? Just where I'm going?
Yep. You're saying where you're going, recognize your parents, and what are you doing? What I meant to you.
Okay, so I'm Madison Vignis. I will be going to the University of Minnesota next year in the College of Biological Sciences. And something that the IB Diploma means to me is that I will now be entering the university with a college credit of a sophomore, which is amazing. So again, not having to take all those just general courses will be able to give me the chance to start my career path in studying biology and really getting to love what I do. So, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Jackson Ilers.
My name is Jackson Ilers. I'll be attending Stanford University next year. I'd like to thank my parents, Mark and Angie, for everything that they've done to help me get through IB. And one thing IB has taught me was to think on a more global level, which is sort of cliche, but especially TOK, which we all took together. It made me think differently and question what I was learning, which I thought was super cool, and it's something I'm going to take into my learning in further years. So thank you.
I'm going to North Dakota State University in Fargo next year. I really want to thank my parents for putting up with everything and for helping me through the IB Diploma these last couple of years. And I just really think that, like looking back on high school, a lot of the things that mattered to me and meant the most to me, like of all those, 90% of them are related to IB and things that I've learned through that. And it just really taught me how to think and like why I think what I think, so.
My name's Grace Pellwitz. I'm going to be attending Pacific Lutheran University in Tacoma, Washington. And I'd like to thank my parents for dealing with a very stressed-out teenager. And I plan on becoming a nurse practitioner. That's what I want to study. And IB has actually positively impacted me by leading me down that career choice. It taught me how interdisciplinary learning can be and how you can bind culture and biology to create a well-rounded person and a well-rounded leader that can help people in the future. So, thank you.
Tovia Slager.
I'm going to start with, first by saying that IB was impactful in that, because I'm a, what you'd call a third-culture kid. And I was born in Israel, my family's Dutch, but I live in Minnesota. So, and the fact that IB gives you a chance to really understand what it's like to be an international like citizen, that was special. And I'm going to say that first because I'm not going to be going to university next year. I'm first taking a gap year in Israel at Yeshivat Karim Beavne. It's a Jewish Studies program, followed by the University of Minnesota. And those are my plans. And I have to thank my dad, who's right there.
Hi, I'm Christopher Trotter. I will be attending the University of Minnesota next year. I'll be studying in the College of Biological Sciences. What I want to do with my life, I would, I want to be a tenured professor at a major research university. I would like to create work that is respected by the intellectuals. And the IB Diploma allowed me to be in an environment where my ideas are challenged by others and peer-reviewed, and that gave me a little taste of what it'll be like in academia.
Hi, I'm Maggie. I will be going to Grinnell College in Grinnell, Iowa in the fall. Those are my parents over there. They are fantastic, and they were just a great support system for a very trying time for all of us. And I think what IB did for me is mainly it taught me how to push my own boundaries and explore how far I could go with my academic pursuits, and I really value that. I think that was an important thing to learn.
I will be attending the University of Minnesota, Twin Cities, next year. And I just want to thank my mom, sitting right there. Also, IB taught me to not only think like a white male that I am, but also to learn perspectives from others, like women, minorities, and which is why some, or part of me wants to go into politics someday. And I will be studying business as well as looking forward to minoring in political science.
I just want to congratulate all of you once again, and let's give Ms. Magdal a big hand for doing a great job. And I'm sorry, we're going to have you come up one more time and take one more official picture right here, and then we'll let you go. So thanks for coming, and please come up to this area up front.
Congratulations.
All right, that was a great, a great spotlight. Apparently, they didn't hear that we were going to be reviewing Policies 506 and 520 tonight. They just left the room. So, so the agenda for tonight, we'll have the call to order, the approval of the agenda, open forum if there is any, the superintendent's report. Discussion items will include the kindergarten first-grade redesign update, the Minnesota State High School League Resolution of Membership for 1617, truth and taxation for 2016, the policy development, first reading of policies, adult basic education space lease, school board city discussion recap, school board listening sessions, and then we'll have the consent agenda, the action agenda, which will include the approval of the date for the truth and taxation, the Minnesota State High School League Resolution for membership for 1617, and possibly the approval of the proposed school board listening session dates and times, communications and transmittals, and then adjournments. Anyone would like to make a motion on the agenda? Bruce moves. Seconded by Jim Benneke. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the agenda, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That passes five to zero. Open forum, I see nobody in the audience in C350, probably hundreds to thousands at home, but they can't participate in open forum. Next up is the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chair Totalevich. I just have two quick items. First of all, just a reminder to the community that we are beginning school before Labor Day this year on Monday, August 29th. This is a little bit unusual for us, so reminding people that school for first grade through 12th grade begins on Monday, August 29th. School for kindergarten starts two days later on Wednesday, August 31st. And then secondly, I just wanted to recognize one of our employees, Michael Beer. Michael is a technology specialist here in the school district. He goes from school to school, making sure that all of our technology works, and he's also a member of the military. He's done a couple of different shifts to Afghanistan and Iraq. And on Saturday, he invited me to spend the day with him on the Air Force Reserve Base near the Twin City Airport. They had a day to honor employers who treat reserve-duty members well, and he feels like St. Louis Park School District has treated him extremely well. And so I spent the day there as one of the 40, representing our school district as one of the 40 employers who were there. It was great fun. I got to see what he does in his second job, and I learned a lot. So I want to congratulate Mike and thank him for inviting me and recognizing the school district as an employer that supports those that serve in the military.
Thank you, Superintendent Metz. For those of you who are thinking about that calendar, the thing I would, I would also point out is June 2nd, 2017. That is the last day of school. For those of you who are thinking we're starting too early, we are also getting out earlier. The first discussion item is the kindergarten first-grade redesign update. We have Carrie Ross and Kelly Etienne.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. We are happy to be here tonight to talk to you about kindergarten and first grade, especially on a night where we're honoring our IB graduates. It seems appropriate to be talking about the beginning of the process and the end of the process, all at the, all in the same evening. Kindergarten and first grade is a really important part of our school system. It's how we start the journey for kids as they go through our schools. And if you remember about a year and a half ago, Kelly and I stood here in front of you and talked about our first year of implementation of our kindergarten redesign. We worked with our kindergarten teachers, and we worked with experts, and we redesigned how we were going to approach all-day kindergarten. And with the overall intention of changing the demographic predictability of student outcomes, a fancy way of saying closing the racial achievement gap, and changing our expectations of ourselves as we are here in service to students. In our first year of the program, our goal was to ensure that 80% of our students were readers by the end of the school year. And this is our data from that year, our 1415 school year. And we met that goal, and in some, in some groups exceeded that goal. We saw a great degree of growth with our students in that first year of the program. And about halfway through that year, we were asking ourselves, what are we going to do next year? How do we do this again next year? Can we do this again next year? So we're here to tell you tonight about the last school year, our 1516 school year. And in kindergarten, we again had remarkable results for our kindergarteners. Our goal again was 80% for all students. Our goal was well above 80%. And not only are we continuing to implement new practices and designs for how we provide learning opportunities for our kindergarteners and how we support our kindergarten teachers, we've expanded that model to first grade, so that first kindergarten cohort, we followed to first grade with a very similar process. We brought teachers together. We provided them with expert training and support. And you're going to hear from Kelly in a little bit. Kelly's role is very important in this process. She gets to work with kids and teachers in those kindergarten and first-grade classrooms every day and ensures that we are all working together toward a common understanding of what those outcomes are. So in our first year of implementation in first grade, our goal was 85%. And as you can see, we met that goal. And that was super exciting. We feel like we're on to something now. We've done, we've done this work two years successfully, back-to-back in kindergarten and our first year in first grade. Kelly's going to give you some examples about what's happening currently in kindergarten and first grade, and then I'm going to come back and tell you about what's next.
So this year, right away, the first-grade teachers noticed a difference in the students when they walked through the door. Even though our fall data wasn't the same as the spring before, the students caught up more quickly, and they understood the routines in centers and pals. And many first-grade teachers have said to me, they bow down to the kindergarten teachers because of what they have done with the students. In kindergarten, our work was about fine-tuning what we had already done in year one and figuring out how to add Making Meaning, which was our new reading resource that we added. And so all the kindergarten teachers liked Making Meaning, but it was rethinking or tweaking things that had been successful from year one and how to make it work altogether. So we made some adjustments after our mid-year data and ended the year really strong. The kids, one of their favorite parts of the day, besides gym and recess, are centers. And they love working in small groups and independently, and they love that time that they get with their teacher, either one-to-one or in small groups, or with other helpers in the room. And the times are very engaging and interactive. This is when you might see the kids using the iPads or playing a game. So they're learning something, but they don't know they're learning something. Tricky teaching. So the teachers are working at fine-tuning those centers to make them better fit the benchmarks that they're addressing at the time and the individual needs of the students. So that was some of the work that the kindergarten teachers continued with, and the first-grade teachers are just kind of getting that together. So this year, which is coming up quickly, we're proud and very confident in the strong foundational skills that all of our students have, and we understand that comprehension, making meaning of text, is more complex. And so that's something we're thinking about as the students move into second grade, that they'll be evaluated more in that regard than strictly the foundational skills. And so, as you know, we added Making Meaning, which was the whole class comprehension focus. But the first-grade teachers took part in a guided reading training so that they could target a specific developmental reading level. And they loved the training, they loved the trainer, and they felt that they learned a lot. And they're really looking forward to starting the year with what they've already learned and beginning guided reading even more quickly and stronger than they have before. But what's also exciting is that the training is going to continue. The kindergarten and first-grade teachers will have a training together implementing guided reading in a different developmental level. And then in February, the first and second-grade teachers will have another developmental level, guided reading training. And then in the spring, we'll have a repeat of what we did last year for first grade, I'm sorry, kindergarten and second-grade teachers, and any new first-grade teachers. So we'll be speaking the same speak about guided reading, K2, in St. Louis Park. The kids will know what's expected of them when they come back to the table because of the routine will be familiar, and the teachers will also know. So that's really exciting work, and the teachers feel really confident and proud of what they are learning and are excited to use that this year. Another thing that we're going to work on is math, especially in kindergarten. Some of the kindergarten teachers in year two felt they had a little bit of breathing room and could move more to focusing on math, moving more towards the center approach that they are finding successful with literacy. We'll work on that in first grade. And we're also going to be, I guess, using the early math data, which is a FAST assessment. So we use FAST assessment. This is the data that you've seen. In literacy, they have a math assessment, and this will be the first full year that we'll have data available for all of our schools. So we'll be using that to help us further understand our students in math development as well. So I'm looking forward to another great year working with these amazing people.
We're lucky to have Kelly returning next year to support our kindergarten and first-grade classrooms. It'll be year three for kindergarten. We expect to continue to refine and develop our program and make it systemic so that we can continue to grow and expand. It'll be the second year for first grade, and as Kelly said, we're really looking forward to it. We've done some fun community events. You'll see on the screen a picture from a community event we did this spring, which was providing books and cookies, of course, who doesn't like cookies with their books, to students. So there were books available to them, especially our young readers, over the summer months. Now that we have done this process in kindergarten and first grade, we're expanding this work into second grade and fifth grade next year. So we're adding two new grade levels to this process. We, it makes sense to do second grade because we're following this cohort of students that we began with when we started with all-day, everyday, free kindergarten for all students. And our goal for, one of our goals in World's Best Workforce is to have all kids reading well by third grade. So we'll continue to expand this model in second grade in the coming school year and third grade the year after that. We also chose to implement this model in fifth grade this year to kind of try to bridge the gap and try to accelerate some of the work that we're doing and kind of meet in the middle, if you will, in third grade and fourth grade. So by the end of two years from now, we'll be standing in front of you and talking about a whole elementary redesign that we've just now started to really reap the benefits of. We've also hired a second-grade and fifth-grade coach that will be working very closely with Kelly. Her name is Marna Rome. She was hoping to be here this evening, but she's a brand-new grandma, and she decided that was an important place to be. So she's with her brand-new grandbaby tonight. Marna comes to us from a Noka Henepin School District. She's a nationally board-certified teacher and has a long history of instructional coaching and classroom practices and successful classroom practices. So we're lucky to have her joining our team. What you see on the screen are some of the things that Marna will be helping the second-grade teachers work with this year. Kelly also described that they'll be getting some professional development training in guided reading, which we know is one of the critical elements of making sure that students are readers and thinkers with those grade-level outcomes. And then some fifth-grade outcomes that they'll be working on with, with the fifth-grade teachers this year. So I'm assuming we'll come back next year and, and give you another update, but Jimmy, you have a question?
So second grade made sense. Before you dive into the fifth-grade goals, can you just explain why fifth and why not third or fourth? You know, why, why did you stop the sequential?
Right, yeah. It does probably- It does probably seem disjointed. We had some big opportunities for fifth grade. We have a lot of demands on the fifth, fifth grade daily schedule for students that kind of make a disjointed learning day. There's lots of things going on in terms of art instruction and dare instruction and band and choir and all kinds of things that are a benefit to fifth grade students, but have become kind of fragmented and kind of cut into the time that we need to provide students with access to grade level standards. So it, it was a timely manner, and we're also doing some really important work in middle school, and it seemed like a good idea to now start building a bridge going into middle school, just like we're building a bridge going into the high school. So it, it just felt like an opportune time to do fifth grade, and it makes a lot of sense to do third grade and fourth grade together as well. So we think it'll be a good plan. It's a little bit out of the box, but we're confident that it'll be good for kids.
I just want to make sure that as we look at those graphs, the graphics that you showed, it is just amazing because those of us who have been looking, looking at these numbers over the years, when we see these things tightening up, closing the gap, the kindergarten ones, we, we expect that now. I mean, great job, you guys. But it was these first grade numbers that I was looking for that I said, wow, can we keep this going? And when you see it go from thirty points to twenty points, closing the gap, and that is statistically not insignificant. Those are big moves, and that's powerful stuff. That's educators doing what they do and doing it purposefully and doing it with a process that I think we now see is working extremely well. And so to the two of you and to all of the teachers, we thank you. That, that is just great work.
Well, thank you. We really take our responsibility to our community and to the students in our care very seriously. When the superintendent tells me that we need to make sure that all kids are reading well by third grade, we figure it out because we believe that that's important for kids to, to launch their academic success and their college and career readiness, their IB readiness or IB diploma readiness, maybe would be a way to say that. And so we appreciate the opportunity to be working on this. And our St. Louis Park teachers and our kids are just amazing. I have, I have nothing but, but gratitude for all of the hard work that they do. We, we sit in a room and we write it on a plan and, and they make it happen.
Can I, I just want to, I think one of the things when I debriefed with both kindergarten and first grade teachers, the first grade teachers said they remember when Mr. Metz sat down with them in the fall, and they were scared because he put out a goal for them that they didn't think they could make. And they were really worried. They didn't want to disappoint him or families or their administrators or themselves. But when we got together at the end of the year and, and they met the goal, they were really proud and they said that there were a lot of things, but one of the things that really made the difference is they felt very supported. They felt that they, that there was a way to help them figure out how to make this work. It wasn't just them in a classroom by themselves muddling through this stuff. And so I give a lot of credit to Carrie and Mr. Metz for providing that support system that made them feel like they could change their teaching practices and examine what they're doing and go there. So I think not a lot of teachers feel that way, but you know, the second grade teachers are going to feel just like that in a few weeks, and I know they'll get the same support that the kindergarten and first grade teachers have as well.
I really want to compliment our teachers because I go to the Edina Public Library and have run into our teachers working on refining their practice together on their own time in the summer. So when people say teachers take the summer off, they are wrong. And then the other thing I think you've done, because starting those, that cohort of kindergarten to first grade, they didn't lose as much over the summer, but there were some very specific things that you put in place to make that happen. Could you just review those real quickly, please? Because we gave, there were events and ongoing things going on.
I'm not sure what you're asking, Karen. Did we do something over the summer?
I know you did. You gave out a lot of books.
We gave out a lot of books, yeah.
And then Peter Holbart and Aquila.
Yeah, Peter Holbart and Aquila have done some homework help and some community outreach. They've, they've provided additional activities for kids over the summer that are academic-focused, access to computer labs, all kinds of things that help keep that summer loss as minimal as possible. When we were looking at this first grade chart, we, we see a little bit of a difference this year. We, we, we were about seven percentage points higher overall than we were in past years. So yes, some of our kindergarteners lost some of the, what they had learned in their kindergarten year over the summer, but we also have a bunch of new kids that joined us at the beginning of first grade. And I think it's also important to point out, again, complimenting our teachers, the students that were new to kindergarten, or new to first grade, excuse me, caught up with the kindergarteners that had been here in first grade in record time. So it was amazing to see the growth that has happened, and, and we don't have it for you here, but Kelly and I spend some time looking at individual student results, and, and the individual graphs are even more impressive that these are.
I think another thing that's really nice is, I know these kids really well, and they move around in our buildings, you know? I can think of one student who next year will be in our third school. He's going into, yeah, so that he has been at three of our buildings now, going into second grade. And so what's nice for those students is when they move into the new classroom, yep, it's a new teacher and, but a lot of the things are the same. They know pals, they know IB, they know centers, they understand how to use the iPad. So some of the groundwork that would have to have been laid in the past when everybody was doing their own thing, now a student can move more seamlessly in to get acclimated more quickly.
I had a question about your, the numbers for kindergarten comparing fourteen, fifteen to fifteen, sixteen, and the endpoint is quite similar for, for all the groups. The start point's quite different. So is, is that just a question of natural year-by-year that cohort's different, or is there something going on where there's, for, that something's happening that we're doing or that preschools are doing that are having them at those higher numbers?
That's a really, that's a really good question. I don't have, we don't have an answer for you. That's something that we've asked when we've looked at the data, too. We have been really intentional about collaborating with our early learning colleagues. We've actually had them part of our kindergarten conversations, so we developed some common lingo about what kindergarten ready means and things that kids, skills and knowledge that kids need in order to be successful in kindergarten. If that's actually an impact in the data, we haven't explored that yet. Those are just questions that we have.
And I'll jump in because I see Prachi there, and I went to Prachi with that exact question because our early childhood teachers noticed this. They noticed that the data wasn't exactly the same from year to year, and they came to me and I went to Prachi. And Prachi, I believe your answer would be, after two years of data, we really don't know for sure what's going on. We need more time. And, and the assessment that's giving, given in the fall of kindergarten, well, I'll let you, I'll let you answer, Prachi, the variation between year to year at the beginning of kindergarten with the FAST assessment.
So if I understand your question, Joe, you're saying incoming in the fall, why do I, why do we see so much discrepancy between students group by race? Is that the question?
Not exactly. So between years, so like between fourteen, fifteen and fifteen, sixteen, the starting points are, are quite a bit higher for fifteen, sixteen, for almost all subgroups.
And I think we had an email conversation, you and me, maybe it was about this, I can't recall, but like I told Rob, we don't know. It could just be that this group of students is different. They just look like this as the test shows them to be, based on what the test is measuring. It could be that in the early years of FAST, when we were using early reading assessment, the test had not been finalized. There were a ton of subtests that the teachers had to give, and the process was not very convenient. Kelly can attest to that. So the tests settled down, and now the teachers have a better familiarity with the test. And as things settle down, I feel like the data will settle down if it is to do with the test. But if not, if it's something else, then we'll continue to see these discrepancies from year to year.
To add to what Prachi said, we also had a different way we administered the test this year. We followed a different process. We changed a lot of variables, I guess, is what I'm saying, so that's part of what we're questioning, too.
Okay. Thank you.
I just wanted to, you might have answered the question, and I, I might have missed it. Just from your twenty fourteen to twenty fifteen kindergarteners, where they ended up, then when, when you see the all, the all scores at eighty-eight percent there, then when we go to twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen for first grade, okay, that's the start point. So that shows us in the all score there of sixty-nine or seventy, whatever it is, that shows we've lost some over the summer. That's what, that's what you told us. Okay. So we, we lost something over the summer, but then they pick it right back up and come back up.
Yeah, or they're new. They could be, all students include everybody that's in that first grade cohort, not just the kids that came from kindergarten.
And I, that is the other thing. Do we know what percentages are on new kids versus, how big of a change was it? Was it ten percent, twenty percent?
I might, I don't know the percentage off the top of my head, Bruce, but it was, I believe it was around fifty students that were, it's new out of a cohort of about three-hundred-and-sixty.
I actually looked that up. It's about sixty, so it's basically one out of six, which is a less mobile population than we've had in my history in St. Louis Park. I was actually asked that question today at Rotary of all places about mobility and, and because I knew that number, about one out of six first graders is new since kindergarten. About sixty moved away and about sixty moved in, and so the same total number, but about one out of six turnover.
Rob, do you know the, the number of kids that went between schools, too? We have a number of students that go between schools.
I don't know that. I know that of the sixty that came in, though, at the beginning of first grade, there were half that were significantly behind.
Okay.
And it was, I mean, literally thirty kids who were starting from scratch. And so I give the teachers a tremendous amount of credit for catching them up so quickly.
Okay. Oh, Prachi, sorry.
Can I add something, please? Yes, so I have also been guilty of referring to this as summer loss. However, as I'm learning more and thinking more and reflecting more, students are learning a lot of things over the summer, but it's what we're looking for. So if they don't, if they have less of what we're looking for, we think it's less. For example, I can think about some of my friends' children who get a lot of learning in other languages, in their other Indian languages. So they're learning a lot, and when they come back, they might show lower numbers, but it's because of what we're trying to measure.
Okay. Thank you very much. Great work by Carrie, Kelly, Rob, Prachi, all the staff on, on this. The next item on the agenda is the Minnesota State High School League resolution. Superintendent, speak to this?
Yes, I can. Each year, the, we are required, it is required that the board authorize membership in the Minnesota State High School League. So this comes to us each year for the board to, to approve. It's on the action part of the agenda. Also, my executive assistant Cindy sent out a Why We Play training video to all board members. That's another requirement that, that all board members view that video before the year begins.
So the, the comment from Karen and Jim is that, that it's a video that we have watched previously, so.
Hopefully they'll either make a new video or come up with a new message or something. I mean, the message is fine, but it's.
Maybe get Carl Anthony Towns. I don't know. It's a nice video, but yeah, I, I agree, I don't necessarily need to watch it multiple times, although I did, did watch it again this, this time, so. Okay, so that one will be coming up in the action agenda. Any comments at, at this point? Okay. The next item is Sandy Salin to talk about the, about truth and taxation.
Yes, this is something that we have to do every year in August is approve our truth and taxation date, which is usually around the same time every year. We have it in the December meeting. This year, it will be December twelfth at six-thirty is when we normally have it, right before the board meeting, and we are required to approve it as a board so that we can send this date to the Hennepin County.
Okay, thank you, Sandy. Any questions from the board? We do this every year, so pretty straightforward. The next item, which I believe the superintendent will also speak to in Cindy's absence, are the two policy readings, first readings, five oh six and five twenty.
Yes, we received information from the Minnesota School Board Association of policies that were changed by the legislature last year that we need to update because the legislators require it. And we, we're bringing two of them tonight for a first reading. There are several more that, that will be coming soon. The first one, policy five twenty, is a little unusual. It's a student survey policy that, that we have not had in the past. So in your packet is a copy of the student survey policy that Cindy believes that we are required to have with changes that the legislature made to the policy last spring. The second one is policy five oh six, a student discipline policy. This one we do have, and, and as you look through that policy, you can see in red, changes that the legislature made last spring, and in blue, parts of the policy that Minnesota School Board Association has that we do not have. So the black is ours, the blue is in the school board policy, association policy, the red are the changes that the legislature has made. So tonight is just a first reading, and, and we'll bring them back next time for approval.
Any questions or comments? Jim Benenke?
Just one general question. Is the language of this heavily constrained by what the legislature said, or it's just that we just have to have such a policy? Is the exact language of the policy pretty much prescribed by the legislature? I mean, do we have much leeway in, in how we, how we implement this?
I will let other board members answer that. My interpretation is that the, the parts in red that the legislature changed are required, and, and that's the part that's changed.
We, oh, go ahead.
So we are part of the Minnesota School Board Association, and one of the services they do for our board and every other school board in Minnesota is to provide policy model language. We can adapt some pieces of that language, and we have. And in fact, a few meetings ago, Jim Yarosh asked Cindy, please keep track of what we as a board are changing for our particular local control reasons that are outside the scope of what MSBA recommends. However, the legislature does take it upon itself to mandate or impose policy language, and we have very little capability of adjusting that language when it comes to us as a mandate.
Any? Any, anything else on this? Jim Yarosh?
And I see Cindy's not here, but I wonder, there's a lot of blue on the school discipline policy, which indicates that we have omitted a lot. And I, and I'm trying to gauge whether that was intentional. And it seems to me, and when I looked at it, that some of that, because we have our own chart, you know, maybe that it was kind of an intentional reason we hadn't, because we just had our own chart on what's acceptable. And we also were exploring, I know when we met with our discipline team not long ago, we are exploring a kind of different kinds of, what's it, restorative, I believe, is that the proper term, right? We talked about, which, you know, they're talking about progressive discipline here. I mean, so it may be that, and that's kind of why we want to know, maybe we've done something, I don't recall it, because we've looked at this several times, that we've intentionally done it. So, I don't know if this is new language that they've added over the last couple of years that we, since we've updated it. It would, might be interesting to know that, because there are, or did we intentionally kind of omit it because we have our chart?
Right.
You know, and I don't know if you know.
I, I don't know completely, but I can tell you, I'm comfortable with our current policy without all the blue language. It gives us a lot more flexibility. And, and I understand that the red language from the legislature needs to be added to what we have now. I don't necessarily think that we need to add the blue language back in. I don't know the answer to the question of how long ago that happened, but I bet Cindy does and we can find out.
That would be, before we vote on it next time, I guess we'd want to know, I don't know if the rest of the board concurs, but at least that. And it's good to know that what Rob's feeling is about, because, I mean, there's several pages of stuff we don't have. And again, I think a lot of it is, you know, that we deal with, but I noticed there are other things that aren't open enrolled students, you know, we don't have separate sections, for example, you know. So, if there are some suggestions and recommendations that administration would have on what we would adopt, that would be helpful.
I, I agree. That'd be helpful for me as well.
I think we're required to take a harder look at this because the State Department of Education and also federal are taking a hard look at equity and discipline. And so, then every school district needs to take a harder look at equity and discipline. And as I understand it, we have a task force convening on that very topic this fall. So, it's, it's a function of timing. We have to look at this policy now, but it's, because it's in a routine, but there will be more changes coming ahead.
Good, yeah. I think, I think it's, it's kind of the way it's supposed to be, I suppose. You know, this is a first reading, we take a look at it, doesn't make some sense, we're going to get some clarification and move on from there, so. All right. The next item is, goes to Sandy. It's the adult basic ed space situation, her property lease proposal.
I don't have a presentation, but I did provide the board with some information regarding an opportunity to lease some space at thirteen forty-two Colorado Avenue. We have had some pressures here in the high school as far as space needs and, and, and we have found a opportunity to lease a piece of property to house our adult basic ed program, which would help the high school alleviate some of those space issues. We have a proposal. This is not something that needs approval tonight, but what this proposal will do is provide information for us to be able to do a lease agreement together with the owner and we will have that approved by our attorney before we bring it to a board for approval, which I'm hoping is going to be that first board meeting in September. So, we wanted to provide this information to you ahead of time in case there's any questions or, or concerns, but looking at the one piece of paper that I gave to you tonight at, since I'm a numbers person and I always look at that bottom line, I wanted to get a clear dollar as far as what that annual rent would be. So, with that, there's going to be some leasehold improvements to meet our program needs, which is going to be factored into that base rent. And as well as, of course, the real estate and CAM utility costs will add to that, bringing an annual amount approximately in that eighty, eighty-five thousand. So, unless there's any questions, that's all I have for you now, but we will have some lease agreement that will be brought to the board for approval.
So, I'm sorry, so the annual gross rent is eighty-eight thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Right, and, and that's lease levy? What, is all that lease levy? Is it a hundred percent?
About ninety percent.
Ninety percent?
Yeah, we usually have to allow ten percent for utilities that we have to be responsible for in maintenance.
Okay, that comes out of our general operating fund.
That's correct. Well, this will be community ed, education.
Oh, come on, community ed.
Do you have a feel yet if the property will need a lot of improvement on top of the...
Actually, no. That's already factored in here. It's about sixty to sixty-five thousand, somewhere in there. We're still at the, the point of determining what that really needs to be and we're going to have that solidified by the time we do that agreement.
Are we going to have an option? Any options? Like to extend or renew?
Absolutely. A year-to-year option after the five years. So, we'll be...
After five years?
Yeah, we're, we're looking at a five year and with a year-to-year after that.
I mean, because, yeah, and it'd be at our option, right? And then, because who knows with our space needs, you know, maybe we could take care of it in-house or...
That's correct.
So, if we could maybe take it, take a step back, either Sandy or Rob, and explain the need for this space, the comparison of where we have ABE housed now versus where the new spot would be, proximity to bus lines, stuff like that, so.
Yep, I can give it a try. And then Lisa Green would be very helpful to jump in too. We have a program called Adult Basic Education that's at the high school. Years ago, it was at Central. Actually, I think it's been moved quite a few times and Lisa probably has the history behind it. But it's been at the high school for quite some time now on the second floor near the pool. And it used to be both the first floor and the second floor near the pool, six or seven classrooms. As the high school got more crowded and, and the enrollment started climbing, the adult basic ed staff was fabulous and they squished together up on the second floor and went from six or seven classrooms down to four. And, and now this year, this summer, the high school is even more crowded and, and they, the high school literally needs those rooms. So, adult basic ed is being fabulous and they're squishing from four classrooms down to three for the start of the year. But still, that's not going to, that's not going to last us very much longer. So, our, we started searching last year for a new home for adult basic ed so that the high school students could use all four of those classrooms. We had a couple of, of places we looked at last year that didn't work out, found this one that looks like it could work out. And at this point, we're hoping for a mid-year transition so that sometime before second semester, adult basic ed could move and the high school could have all four classrooms starting second semester of this year. I know even this fall, we had to take an old storage room down on the basement of the high school down near the orchestra room that we had used for storage and made a classroom out of that just to get by this fall. So, it's getting pretty tight and, and so that's pushing us to find a new home for adult basic ed. It's important to be on a bus line because many of the students who use these programs require public transportation. And so, that was a limiting factor as we, as we looked for space. But this one seems like it would work. It's a good space, it's big enough, it's close enough to a bus line, and Lisa might want to add some things. She's been helping us from the community ed side.
Well, yeah, it does meet all of our needs with the leasehold improvements that will be made. It actually is a very nice space and like Rob said, it's, it's on three bus lines, actually. And so, we think that have, you know, them having their own space like that will, might even actually grow the program a little bit.
And I must, if I can add to, I just want to correct myself. This isn't all going to be a community ed because we are going to use some of the warehouse space too for the general education purposes. We're finding that there's a space need for warehouse needs as well for general education and the district as a whole.
How many students are we talking here and how, how has the program been doing? Has it been increasing, decreasing over the years?
Well, it goes up and down. It depends on if you're talking about GED or ESL, you know, English Language. So, it's, it kind of has been going up and down in the various areas. We actually think we'll get more GED students by it not being in a high school because some of our students don't want to come, they just left here for whatever reason and they don't want to come back into the high school. So, we think that we might be able to grow that program over at this new space. Otherwise, yeah, our, our attendance does go up and down, but we're looking at about sixty students right now.
And is that mostly in the evening? Is there, or what about utilization during the day?
It's mostly during the day. Actually, our evening classes right now, a lot of them go over to Hopkins because we didn't have enough, we didn't have enough students here at night, so we had to consolidate.
Just on your last comment, Sandy, any allocation? I mean, yeah, just like, have you thought, like the general fund hit? I mean...
As far as what we're going to get hit for the utility cost?
From the warehouse, yeah.
I mean, it's, I'll have to figure it out, but it's going to be pretty minimal. And it's warehouse space, so it's not going to include any leasehold improvements whatsoever. Because they do have a pretty good sized warehouse space there. The leasehold improvements that we're creating for the ABE program really is the warehouse piece of it where we have to add a few walls and, and do a few things to make it accommodate for the program.
Converting warehouse to classroom space?
Right.
All right. Anybody, anybody, all right. Thank you, Sandy. Thank you, Lisa, for being creative and flexible and coming up with this, with this space. Next item, we're going to have Karen Waters talk about kind of a subcommittee that the school board and city council have, have, have formed coming out of our joint meeting with them. So, with that, I'll just let her take.
Thank you, Chair Tavich. The school district and the city have a tradition of meeting at least once a year. And our meeting in March, it became clear that we need to have a subcommittee from both entities meeting on a little more regular basis to discuss how we can further our collaborative partnerships. And this is part of our current strategic plan. So, we, we met again on July fourteenth with Rob, myself, Jim Beneki, and sometimes Ken Morrison can attend, sometimes he can't. And then from the city side, Tom Harmoning, Greg Lindberg, Steve Halfen, and then on the staff side, it, it depends on what the topic is. So, most recently, Cindy Walsh, Jason West, Rick Bean were part of the discussion because we wanted to see with their architectural renderings and our architects, was there some common pieces that we could work together on? One of the things that they pointed out is as part of our design facility study, we're looking at a closing date on Central. And they reminded us that the two gyms in Central plus the pool are important community assets. And so, how would we replace that? The, the groups of architects met, we didn't find very much overlap in what I would call the Venn diagram model of trying to work this out together. But it's still valuable discussion as we move forward with our planning and the city moves forward with its planning in terms of how we best serve the needs of our community. The other things that are important considerations that are coming forward are outdoor facilities. So, the space at the middle school, I thought that was city responsibility, but that's actually our property and we do need to give that some attention, not only for our own purposes, but for the community usage, because there's been a tremendous increase in lacrosse, fast pitch softball, soccer. So, there's some things that we need to consider as an entity in how we use our space with our community. The other thing that's going to be coming down the pike, Westwood Nature Center will be doing a redesign in about 2019. That'll be a ten to fifteen million dollar project. And that is a project that they are working closely in collaboration with the school district for the learning space because we have a lot of field trips that take place at Westwood and how do we maximize the, the best utility of that space? So, that's kind of it in a nutshell. We don't come to any final conclusions. We're really exploring and brainstorming and making sure that the city is considering the school's needs and the school district is considering the city's needs. And we, we welcome input from the community as we go forth through this process.
Any comments or questions from the board?
I just have a comment. I appreciate the folks who are both on the city side and, and on the school side who are putting their time in to have these meetings. I think, like you said, they're, they're vital to keep the, the communication open and also, you know, our superintendent and the city manager, Tom Harmoning, I know have fairly regular meetings as well to make sure that we're, you know, collaborating well. So, I, I think, I think this is great. I, I, do you guys have a standing meeting or do you, is it more ad hoc or?
It's more ad hoc. It's, it's more ad hoc at this point, Joe.
Thank you. All right. Thank you for that, Karen. The next item is the school board listening sessions. And it doesn't look like we have a list in the, in the packet here. I know that Cindy has reached out in terms of getting some dates and times for what would be available this fall. So, that can be shared probably later, later with the board. So, I, I don't think we're going to have an, an approval on this tonight. The one thing I do want to bring up is something that we had discussed previously as a board. You know, in, in years past, we've had listening sessions that have been, you know, three sessions about a month, a month apart. And I know we, we once had a discussion more recently about having it maybe quarterly throughout the school year. So, I'm wondering, you know, some feedback here if we would want to do that now, you know, have one in the fall, one in the winter and one in the spring, if that sounds like something we would, we would like to do.
I like the idea of quarterly because then as things transpire in the community, there's just that additional opportunity to hear from the community on different things. I also like, we had talked about being in different locations. Part of our strategic plan is to go out into the community more than having people come here because they might not necessarily feel comfortable coming here. So, we've met at the library, we've met at Lenox, we've met at schools, but making a very proactive effort to be out in the community with this particular informal effort.
Yeah, it's, it's, I think it's important too to remember the context. I think they're kind of evolved, you know, we were having some budget issues and, and we were getting some pushback because the, the, the opportunity to speak to the board at a meeting, there's really no opportunity for back and forth and that's kind of how it evolved. And you get a sense of when there's a need to talk. I mean, I, you know, so I'd rather be, I'd rather have more at a time when they feel like there's need than have them, because then lately, they have not been well attended. I mean, there's been, in my rec, there's been several where there haven't been people showed up. So, I don't know if we want to think about, do we want a standing one or do we want to kind of feel sensitive? Maybe we, we schedule one, you know, not knowing exactly where, we, we have one out there, at least one out there. And then we see how, what kind of response are we getting, what issues are coming up. A little more ad hoc that way just to, you know, and if like around budget time, sometimes there's been a need for more. We have to give enough notice, obviously, but I think if there's an issue going on, the community will be receptive if we put out a, a notice that we're having a, a listening session, so. that we're having a listening session, so.
I agree with both of you. And what my, my point is that I agree with Karen. I think we ought to just set them up quarterly. Just make sure we have one in the fall, one in the winter, one in the spring, summer if necessary. But the idea is, as Jim says, if there's a hot issue out there, and we should have added to those. But if we have one that's scheduled, then people who want to can plan on that. And then if we need to, we can schedule either before or after, especially if we get a hot topic that needs to be addressed additionally.
So if, Rob, if you could follow up with Cindy, have her share the fall dates that she was looking into with the board?
Yep.
We can choose one of those, and then just have that on the calendar, and then we'll work on, we'll go from there. I will just say we'll go from there. You know, maybe we'll end up probably having something later in the school year, but for now, let's get something on the calendar for the fall.
For the fall.
For the fall. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. The next item is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda for tonight?
So moved.
Moved by Karen, seconded by Bruce. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Consent agenda passes 5-0. Sorry about that. Next item, next portion is the action agenda, and the first item is the approval for the date of truth and taxation. We have December 12th, 2016. I believe we said at 6:30, right before the board meeting, that's scheduled for the night, for that night.
Moved.
Moved by Jim Yarosh. Would anybody like to second Jim Yarosh's motion?
It was a controversial.
Seconded by Jim Benneke. Any, maybe we've got some discussion here. No? Maybe not. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We have a controversial truth and taxation meeting set, date scheduled? 5-0. The next item is the Minnesota State High School League Resolution for Membership for 2016-17. Is there a motion to approve that resolution?
So moved.
That's moved by Bruce.
Seconded.
Seconded by Karen. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the resolution say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes 5-0. The next item is the approval of the proposed school board listening sessions. Do we, how do we formally treat this? Do we?
Table it.
Table it? Is there a motion to table this?
So moved. Second.
Motion to table by Jim Yarosh, seconded by Bruce. Any discussion? All those in favor of tabling it say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That is tabled by a vote of 5-0. We're up to communications and transmittals.
You're going to pass this by one of the members?
Yeah, I assigned something, and then I didn't remind anybody of the assignment. So this was a, this is a true test. I will, I will start. I talked about, well, I'll throw something out first before I do the assignment filibuster so people can think about their assignment. The step, school supplies drive is going to be going on here in August. Just make sure to get your supplies to them. I think they have a list on their, on their website of what they do and don't need. They get some things in great supply and other things. It's more difficult to get, so check that out. My assignment for the group had to do with the, what we're reading this summer. We did this last, last year was the first year we did it? Or was it, have we done this for a couple of years?
Couple of years.
Couple of years. That's how good my memory is. So, yeah. So I've been listening to, this doesn't count as a book, but I've been listening to this podcast by Malcolm Gladwell called Revisionist History. It's a great series of podcasts. He talks about all sorts of things that have transpired in history and how maybe we've thought it worth, we would think about them in different ways now, or, you know, just a different lens on certain things, certain things that have transpired. There are several that are about education. There's one about shooting underhanded free throws, which is, I thought was great. There's, there was one about music and the creative process, which probably was my favorite one. But anyhow, through going through all these, these podcasts, I was reminded of how interesting I thought Malcolm Gladwell is, and I don't always agree with him. But then, you know, that got me to go back to the library and pick up one of his books, Blink, so I'll be going through that and maybe a couple other of his books this summer. So who would like to go next? Jim Benneke?
By some coincidence, I've been reading a book that relates to history also, People's History of the United States. It's kind of along the same theme about how basically the winners write history. It's a very interesting perspective.
Thanks, Jim. Bruce?
Because I'm in a book club, it's easy for me. We're always reading books. But one of the things we went, we did, we've been through a series of things, like the great books and other things. We've now gone back to the Pulitzer Prize winners, and the one we're reading right now is called The Sympathizer. It's fiction, but based on Viet Nguyen's experiences, and it is just, it won the Pulitzer because it's probably one of the most beautifully written things I've read lately. So it's called The Sympathizer, and it's about being a double agent at the end of the Vietnam War.
We'll go to...
Are you ready?
Yeah.
All right.
Jim Yarosh.
The last book I read was Where Men Win Glory. It was written by John Krakauer. His Into Thin Air was a tremendous book. I would recommend, and they've since made a movie out of it. But it's about Pat Tillman, who quit the NFL to enlist in the military after 9/11, and kind of about him and what would lead a person to do that, give up a career and fame and go be a grunt, basically, and then was killed in Afghanistan, and then only to have his, really, his family continue to press and pry, and then find out that it was really a friendly fire incident and a big cover-up. And so there was a lot of, a little bit of politics, a little bit of military history, a little bit, there's... So it was an interesting read for me.
I have a very eclectic reading list. Bruce can attest, the 397-page Essa Act, all of it. It's important to read the playbook, people. But I'm also working on my own personal racial identity learning, and so I'm halfway through The Short But Tragic Life of Robert Peace. It's a book written by his college roommate, a kid from, really, the projects of Baltimore, and how did he get into an Ivy League school, but then ultimately fail, and the system that conspired to cause that. I always reread all the Harry Potter books every summer. It's how I start my summer. And then my son surprised me with Harry Potter and the Cursed Child. So that's the script of the play that's underway. And, you know, for, I liked the story. I liked the characters. It was good. And then I'm reading, I'm about halfway through The Lantern of Truth. This was, you might recall, in the spring, Verona Publishing did a project with our students, and there are some really interesting short stories in here. So thank you, students, for adding to my summer reading list. I'm enjoying it. How about you, Rob?
I was going to...
Staff is next.
...that I read financial planning books because my third son is in college, but that was half a joke. The Spirit Catches You and You Fall Down, which is about a Hmong family who moved to California, and a young Hmong girl had epilepsy. And the book is about the difference between Western medicine, treating this with, treating seizures with medicine versus treating seizures with their traditional spiritual holistic way, and the conflict that occurred, even to the point of social services taking the child away from the family because they felt they weren't taking care of the child because they weren't using medicine, and how, over time, the medical community came to understand that both options can work. And so it was a very interesting book. Has a lot of application to education.
This is optional. This is optional. If anyone wants to shout out something, they can. Otherwise, Carrie?
I have a reading list, very similar to Karen's, I think. I am rereading The Flat World of Education. I'm using that as a textbook for a scintillating class I'm teaching on education policy. And for fun, I've just started reading It's a Good Time for the Truth, which is about race in Minnesota. It's a very interesting book. I highly recommend it.
So again, I'll go somewhere. I'm going to collect it. Did you read an entire...
We want it on the record when you say it.
I read an entire Compensation Systems and Structures book for a course I teach in compensation. I've read the benefits textbook that I'm teaching for this fall. I'm reading two books now, Kokoro Yoga, Maximize Your Human Potential and Development of the Spirit, and also Boys in the Boat. And Boys in the Boat is a great book about a rowing team in, I think it's Oregon, who went to the, Washington, who went to the Olympics in 1934-ish, or, yeah, yeah, ish, yeah. So anyway, it's a great, it's an interesting book, and you get a little history on the side.
I'll share. I'm reading The Nature of Power by James Hillman. He's a very old white guy, psychotherapist, philosopher. And really, it is about power, as in how do we relate to each other? How do we relate to the world? So it's just a very, very high level, like 200,000-foot level, look at how do you then live and relate to things around you so that everything can be and everything can flourish.
I'm reading a bunch of books. I'm taking a life coaching class, and I'm reading Dibbs In Search of Self, The Alchemist, some of Parker Palmer's work, The Influencer. So a series of books that relate to life coaching.
And in addition to a whole lot of preschool books, because I have a preschooler at home, I'm rereading Juggling Elephants, which is a fantastic little fable about how we all need to beware of our three-ring circus and remember that we can only be in one ring at a time. So that's my summer read.
And you're just reading a stack of spreadsheets, right?
You know that. Yeah, you can know that. Yeah, a lot of accounting books, a lot of tax books.
Improvement books.
But, you know, since I do have 10-year-olds at home, and we do keep up on our reading at home, Ricky Ticky Taffy. I'm reading that again.
Nice. All right. Well, thank you for indulging us there. I appreciate that. Any other communications and transmittals?
The Children First Picnic is this Wednesday at Oak Hill Park, so if you'd like to attend, I would go to the Children First Facebook page because Karen Atkinson has a signup genius link to RSVP. It's free to attend, but she just likes to keep track of the count. And it starts at 11:30 at Oak Hill Park on Wednesday, August 10th. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Karen. Anybody else? All right. Bruce, you have no play. There's, in the summer, there's no plays.
Karen did mention that we were in the process of reading the Essa Act. I mean, if you need any bedtime reading, if you're not sleeping well, it's a great read. But it is something that we are required, as a school board, to have input on. And we've run through a little bit, but we'll be bouncing things by the staff and by everybody as our input is requested. We do have people on the committees from the high school. Our principal Meyer is working it, and is one of the committees going on at MDE. And it's a big deal. It's a huge change from No Child Left Behind, and it requires school board input, so it's very important.
Thank you, Bruce. Thank you, Karen, on that. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Bruce.
Seconded.
Seconded by Karen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? None. 5-0. We are adjourned at 8:29.